Okay, I want to call the committee of the whole meeting for Monday, September twenty twenty one to order. Roll call, please.
Mayor Gaffino.
Here.
Trustee Curtis.
Here.
Trustee Gateley.
Here.
Trustee Lowery.
Here.
Trustee Nedvedge.
Here.
Trustee Salazar.
Here.
All right, audience comments.
Hi, my name is Gabrielle Shepard and I'm living in Oak Hill subdivision.
Can you state your address too, please?
Fifty-eight White Oak Drive. And we have, last year, I need to get a little bit background from it. We are living in a subdivision for twenty-three, four years. And we moved over here, then it was very quiet and safe neighborhood. Recently, we have a foreclosure in the neighbor house from us. And a lady bought the house. And a half year after she bought the house, she opened an Airbnb in a basement. And we have every day coming and going people, strange people. And we needed to call already the police for one, one side. Then there was doing a party over there and I think they're smoked joints also, what the police was telling us. And so it goes on now for a little bit over half a year. And they have no access from home itself. They have to go down the side, the side stairs, the concrete stairs. What is between my house and their house and there is the opening from about fifteen feet. And my window, my bedroom window is right on this corner. So I heard everybody what is coming and going. They're going down the stairs, they have no light over there. They are using her phones with a flashlight to go down, to go around the property from them. Go in the sliding door with what they have open with lock, a key lock. So they have to open the key lock, then they have to take the key out in the middle of the night. And then opens the sliding door from the bottom, from the back, from the house and then go in. So this is going on over half a year. And we have small children in our neighborhood right around it, what I in kindergarten age. And you not know who is coming, who is going, nobody is monitored from, from the company over there. And the cars are getting parked in the street. And when this accident, incident happened with a party going on. There are parked two between my house and the following neighbor's house. So there was not directly parked in front of this Airbnb. So they could go away with us, they thought. But there was coming directly to our yard, over our grass, between our tree and our window. And was going down the hill and in this Airbnb. And this is concerning me a lot. I'm working seven days, twenty-four hours. I'm on text, so when, when I'm called, I have to go to work. And this people are going anytime in a day and in the night, in and out the hill and in this Airbnb. And this concerns me very, very much. And I like to find a solution for this. I don't think in single family homes should be a open hotel. We have enough hotels in North Aurora around, so we not need to open in a single family home hotel in a basement. So this is my concern. Thank you for your.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Steve, can you comment?
So we looked into this a few months ago. And there we had gotten a complaint from the Oak Hill subdivision, similar story. So as of right now, the village doesn't have any rules or zoning that precludes people from opening an Airbnb in town. There were some question, and I don't mean to put Kevin on the spot, but it might come down to our home rule status versus non-home rule, us being a non-home rule community on what we can and can't license. But what we can regulate, if we chose to do so, was through zoning, if I remember correctly. So home rule communities might have more authority to have people licensed and have it higher standards for opening Airbnb if they want to. When you're a non-home rule community, you have to fall back on zoning. So right now, we don't have any zoning codes. If you look it up right now, you probably find, I'm going to guess between ten and twenty properties at the most in North Aurora. That would be rentals through Airbnb. It's been something that we monitor every few months, we just check to see what's out there. We don't see a lot. And quite frankly, this is this Oak Hill address, which I believe is the one that the resident is referring to, is the only one that we've ever actually had a call on. So that's where it's at right now. The other option would be that each individual HOA may have that ability within their own subdivision to regulate rentals that way as well.
You said they do?
It's my knowledge. Well, an HOA could, you know, through the board, assuming that there was, you know, they go through the approval process, could impose some rules that might limit or prohibit something like that. As far as, you know, municipal authority, we're pretty limited in some ways in what we can do, you know, as a, as a non-home rule entity, we don't, you know, we're dependent upon having our authority coming from the state legislature. And the Airbnbs are, you know, a relatively new thing and that the legislature hasn't really addressed them specifically. So it becomes a little bit difficult to craft even a zoning ordinance that would, that would address Airbnbs. It may be possible, you know, we did a little bit of research the last time, some question came up about it, but there wasn't actually, I don't believe at that time, there wasn't actually an incident or a, you know, a specific complaint about them, other than someone just didn't like the fact. But we could certainly look into it deeper and see, you know, what could possibly be done. It would probably have to be done through zoning. And part of the problem with that is that if we do it through zoning, any existing use would be grandfathered. So we, you know, there may be a limit to what we can do, but we can certainly try to dig deeper into it. And if it was through zoning, which once again is, other than the individual HOA, if you go through zoning, it would have to go through the plant commission. And with Mike not being here tonight, I'll, I would believe the normal process that we would do is typically Mike and I like to go to the plant commission with something that's more of a general idea as opposed to an exact ordinance, what we call workshop. So we would take it the plant commission first, if the board wanted us to look into it. And then what we would do is simply put some parameters around and actually work with the plant commission to see if they thought it was necessary to, to address. In fact, I want to say years ago, it came up at a plant commission meeting, probably about five, six years ago. And at that time, I don't know if it was an actual workshop, but I just remember the question coming up. And it never really went anywhere from there. And like I said, I feel for the resident, but it is the only incident we've had or that we've known about where there's been a a negative connotation to it has been in that property in Oak Hill.
Mayor, have you talked to the HOA, then your HOA? That's okay.
There are parking and we have a curb. When we, when you are driving in our subdivision, we have a curb. And in the last few years, they are parking all different cars in the street. And when you are coming from right or left, it doesn't matter, you cannot see after the curb, when cars are staying over there. So the kids what are playing in a front yard, maybe a ball is falling in the street. And some of the people are driving very fast to our subdivision, not always, but some. And the kid could run after the ball and the driver in the car could not see it and hits the kid. This is, all this comes together and this is hanging together with this Airbnb. When you are park a garbage, not a garbage truck, sorry, a moving truck on the street, what is only two lanes. What you can see.
Steve, I think it would be probably prudent to have the planning commission address this issue and see if there's some sort of, if it can't be addressed through a zoning ordinance, some other type of, I don't know, way that, that, it's clearly, I think, a one-off nuisance type of situation. But maybe the village should have something that if you have a situation like this, that we can help the homeowners out. At this point, it doesn't seem to be much to be done, but the clearest, fastest way for you is your homeowners association.
Right.
But maybe the village should just look into it if there's anything to think.
Two things are, so in the current, the way that we would address something like this and lack of zoning, when you don't have a specific use zoned, and right now we call it, let's call them short-term temporary rentals. That's not something that's a hundred percent obviously addressed in our zoning code. It can be, but most likely as a special use. So anytime in the future, somebody wanted to come in and do that, they would have to get special use approval from the village board. Given the village board a case by case, look at each property. The, and Kevin jump in if you would like to. Well, that and the concern too is then, if you allow one, but deny one in another similar circumstance, you have to be uniform in the way, you, you try to be as uniform as possible. And that's why case by case is very important to make sure that you're using the same criteria. So that's why the plant commission would be mostly involved, because it would most likely be a special use requiring individual review. In the lack of zoning, we do have what we would normally, I call everyday measures, which are, and, and you are right to do so. If you feel the police need to be involved because it's a, you see a crime in progress, where you see something that's a threatening situation or suspicious, call the police. If it's the upkeep of the property, if they're not mowing the lawn efficiently or not, code enforcement, go out there and enforce it. So we do, I know it's not exactly each individual house, we're not making them go through the process, but at least we have those everyday things in place while they're happening to go out there. So if there is a latent noise violation at two in the morning, or people are out there partying on a Wednesday night late, you call the police, let them go out there and talk to the people.
Thank you.
Just one more question. So back to the HOA, so you just talked to.
Martin, Martin, let me, so I'm a member of that HOA, I'm on the board. So a couple of months back, Steve and I did have a discussion about this. And one of our other issues, not issues with the, I don't want to turn this into a board meeting, an HOA board meeting, but we do have a new management company, as you're aware, within the last year and a half. So we've been working with them to try to figure out with, without spending too much money, because as you're aware, we're pretty light on funds for our HOA. But we're trying to figure out what options we do have. And like Kevin mentioned, I think part of our problem will be that whatever new rule we might be able to get approved by, by the community voting, might be grandfathered in current. What, what's there now can't be basically kicked out, because the way I understand it, and Kevin, maybe you can speak into this, but when that person purchased the home, there was no rule against it. So you can't then change the rule after they purchased the property. Now, I'm not saying that's, I'm not a legal guy. So I don't know if that's fact or not, but right now, that's kind of this discussion we've been having with our management company. Trying to reach out to some HOA attorneys to figure out what the best option is, because you're not the only one that's complaining about this now, so.
Have you tried to talk to the neighbor and just express the concerns you've had?
They are not talking with us. They are not coming out and.
So they live there though, they live there?
They live there, yes. They live in the main floor and upstairs. And the Airbnb is in a basement. It's built out, walkout. And it have a kitchen, two bedrooms, bathroom and a sitting area. So I would presume, when you cannot do anything about it, you know, to make them stop us, at least to make it this way. So they have to go to the house, to the basement.
Yeah.
And not around on my property or between my property and them. And wake me up all the time, you know, then I need my sleep too.
So Steve, short-term rentals are allowed in a residentially zoned area?
Correct.
Okay.
And one of the things that we were potentially thinking of is making a, and again, I don't know if this would go back to being just grandfathered in or not, but making a minimum short-term rental, say if you have to, if you want to rent a home, it's got to be a minimum of thirty-day rental or something like that, which would certainly discourage one and two-day rentals. Because I, I agree that it is, you don't know who your neighbor is. And literally, not every week, not every month, not every six months, it's every night. There's a different person from where, who knows, coming into this property. And the, the other complaint that, that I had had from a different neighbor, that's, that actually lives directly behind this home, was on a Saturday night, maybe the same party you're referencing. But that's what's happening is these, they're renting the house for a weekend, someone from out of town, throwing a bash, because it's not their house and they don't really care about it. And then if they get in trouble, they'll get a little slap on the hand and they don't care, because they're never going to be back there again.
Exactly.
So it's, I mean, it's convenient to come right off the highway, you got a nice little home there to rent for a couple of days and then get out of there. That's, to me, my, my concern, and if this, I mean, I don't live next to that house, but I'm, it's just around the corner for me. But safety would be my concern.
Yes.
You do not know who is, you don't know who's there.
Yeah. And this is my concern very, very much. I, I, I'm afraid to go on vacation and leave my house. And I don't know what is going on. I have no control when I go on vacation. So I cannot say to the police department, okay, send one guy from you, please, and stay there overnight to check my property up, everything, it's all right. So. A lot of concerns, you know, and when you are yourself living directly names to these people, you see a different too. You are only hearing it now from me and I pronounce not every word right, but it is different when you are living over there or when you're only hearing the situation. It's very, very bad.
If the village board wanted to move this forward, what I would recommend is you'd have to take a wider look. It wouldn't just be about Airbnb, because you're also getting into short-term rentals and/or long-term rentals even of people's houses and renting out rooms in their houses, because whether it's on Airbnb or not, people, you know, are probably renting out parts of their houses that aren't on Airbnb. Maybe they're just going through a local Realtor, or they're just renting out part of their property. That stuff exists already that isn't on Airbnb, but it's also in the same category of issues, right? Except the only difference is it's not maybe a nightly rental or a weekly rental. It's someone that might be there for a month or a year at a time.
Steve, could we look at this from a different, different way? Like maybe look at implementing a village tax that would apply to those type of rentals that maybe would be discouraging from people opening them?
I think that's the licensing issue. That was what we looked into and that's where the non-home rule status comes in. We don't have the ability to do a lot of what some of the other towns around us do, because they have the authority to supersede the state in certain aspects. So that's the same reason why we can't have a crime-free housing ordinance or maybe like a rental licensing program that some towns around us have, where they require certain landlord certifications. That's why, going back to this from a few months ago and talking to Kevin and, and being here tonight, I think the best way to do this, if we were going to do this, is you'd have to approach it through zoning and make it part of the actual code. Once it's in the code, it can be enforced as well by not only the community development department, but there may also be things that we can do where the police could enforce things by local ordinance or whatnot. So that's, right, I guess where I'm at now is if the board wants us to look at this, what we would do in a workshop is look at not just the short-term rentals for the Airbnb, but also short-term rentals in general.
Would that exclude this house anyway?
According to Kevin, and I'm guessing this was the, and Trustee Nedvedge, it's probably what they're calling illegal non-conformity. So something that was in before the zoning code change.
Could help her anyway.
Unless the house had something significantly, maybe change in ownership or something like that, that might trigger it to then fall out of compliance.
Please look into it. And then I think we're in agreement that we'd like to see something changed.
Yeah.
At the least, we can do some.
We sympathize for you, for sure, we understand, so thanks for bringing it up. Anybody else, audience, trustee comments? Item one discussion, Steve?
Thank you. Item number one on the committee of the whole agenda tonight is a Gerald Genesis incentive agreement. And this is a pretty straightforward sales tax agreement. And Bill Hannah, our finance director, is going to take us through it. If the board is good with this, it'll go to the village board meeting for final approval.
Thank you, Steve. As the board recalls, back in August sixteenth, at the committee, the whole meeting, the Gerald Auto Group approached the village about wanting to remodel one of the buildings, it's two oh four Hanson, and do some renovations and convert it into a standalone Genesis dealership. Right now, the accounting staff of Gerald Auto Group works out of there. So being the only building at the auto mall that's not being currently used for auto sales, it is currently underutilized. The cost of renovation, as they explained in the August meeting, was around four million dollars. They approached the village with a request to finance that with an economic incentive agreement, which would be a fifty percent agreement, up to two million dollars over fifteen years. This is a little different than the agreement that the village entered into with Gerald Auto Group last year for the Ford dealership. There was existing sales tax base for that dealership, so a floor was set around two hundred and twenty thousand dollars. And anything above that, at the rate of eighty-five percent, is eventually going to be returned to Gerald Ford. In this situation, there is no sales tax, so a straight fifty percent, which is a little simpler of a, of an agreement, of an arrangement, is what the request was. So the economic incentive agreement has been drafted. If there's any questions, we can walk through it. Otherwise, it would be before the village board for approval at the next meeting.
I have a question. So what is the direct benefit to the village, other than a new business? If we're not going to be getting revenue to offset the outset of what they're asking?
Sure, I don't know if I, I touched on that or not. It's projected, and John DeVorek from Gerald Auto Group is here as well to answer any questions. There's projections for sales tax roughly starting around a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year, approaching three hundred thousand dollars over the next several years.
After how many years of them being open?
I believe the projections were after three to four years, it would generate at that higher level, of which they would receive fifty percent and the village would retain the other fifty percent.
So what would be our recapture time?
It really depends on the pace of the growth of the, it's a two million dollar cap and there's no cap on an annual basis. So if the dealership exceeds projections, there's a chance that the incentive agreement would be satisfied in a shorter period, maybe ten, twelve years, maybe even shorter than that, based on, you know, based on how auto sales are doing. So that's why there's a fifty percent split, it's shared equally over time. And after the two million dollar limit is reached, then the agreement would be satisfied, all the sales tax revenue would, that's received from that point on, would come back to the village. And John, I don't know if you wanted to mention anything else, unless anyone has any questions.
We're good.
Yeah.
Good.
Yep. Thank you. Item two.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item number two is a presentation that is going to be done by Williams Architect Group. And basically, as you know, we've been going through our Public Works Expansion Project. And we've been going through the RFQ, which is the Request for Qualifications Process. We identified architect firms that were qualified. We interviewed a couple and the staff here, it was a committee of six of us internally. We have selected Williams as the group to present to you tonight, should they're going to talk about their experience. And if you are ready to move forward, the next step would be to enter into an agreement at an upcoming village board meeting. Enter into an agreement at an upcoming village board meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you, go ahead.
Thank you. Mark Wishouse, I'm president, Williams Architects, very excited to be here this evening. Talk briefly about our firm, answer any questions you might have with me, is Mark Brody. He and I will be working on this project with you and be the leadership team throughout the whole project. So Williams Architects, for the next slide. Again, I could see Mark, my two marks, yeah. And also, we have also bring in a consultant WRA, they've helped us on many public works facilities to plan and optimize for efficiencies of work for the facilities going forward. They'll be part of our team. Plus we'll have engineers, mechanical, electrical, plumbing, structural. We'll have folks that specialize in low voltage systems for access control. Uh, and computer systems, et cetera, and then landscape architects working with us to round out our team. Williams Architects has been doing a lot of public works facilities over the years. At the current time, we're already working in Montgomery to help them. Uh, build a new public works facility. We're a couple of months away from completing the construction documents and bidding that project out. Also working in Wooddale uh and uh down in Florida for a project. So we're very current and active. We did Carpenter'sville, a public work some years back in Lake County Forest Preserve District. So. Our firm's uh been specializing in municipal work for the great deal of its forty-five year history. And uh this is a project type we uh consider a real core competency of our organization. Like I said, uh leadership Mark Brody here, he has also uh done a number of public works facilities before joining our firm, which only adds another ten plus. Public Works facilities level of experience. So we're very excited to be able to bring you a team that has over forty public works projects. Uh, of experience in its years. The firm itself established in nineteen seventy-four, so we're forty-five years plus here. Uh, I've done hundreds of municipal projects, like I have said, a very stable group of senior ownership that's been in place for many years. A lot of lead uh accomplished projects and uh we pride ourselves on listening. First and foremost, to our elected officials and their staff in answering to the citizens. Again, Montgomery New Facility now wrapping up its design work, about a seventy-five thousand square foot building. And the Newport Ritchie, again, different uh kind of colors they like down there, but again, we do what our client likes and whatever you would like, we will do it. And like I said, Carpenter'sville, it's about eighty-five thousand square foot facility, a very successful project. It served them very well. And budget cost control is always a very important topic in conversation between the architect and elected officials. We understand that very much. We worked very hard uh throughout our history to uh formulate accurate cost estimates. And convey the costs and spend our clients' money very wisely. Our track record of planning projects and putting a budget to them and then staying within that budget throughout the project is basically a hundred percent for about twenty years. On our municipal project. So we work very hard to give you good cost information early on so that you can make your decisions with confidence. And again, our team, uh very experienced professionals, we've done a lot of these project types. Uh, very, we do very careful drawings. We're very used to providing drawings that are bid in the public market. And by doing our quality control processes, we keep our chain doors very, very low to the benefit of uh, of the. Of our clients and yet even the contractors, the projects go very smoothly. And again, we're very dedicated to this project with you. And uh we are working hard to understand your goals and we will adopt those goals as our own. So. Very excited again about the project, very eager to get going and you have our pledge that we will do a very good job for you. So if any questions, we'd be glad to answer those.
Well, thank you.
It was an effective presentation. Ours was an hour long and so I told them to slim it down.
And we did.
And we, and they did. That's effective.
Very good.
Yeah, but I do want to point out that the interviews were pretty extensive and. John, you can jump in. I mean, on our team, uh during those interviews were myself, Bill Hannah was there, Brandon Tonorelli, our village engineer. John was part of that review process as well. And uh, I think what really sold us on Williams, other than experience, was their internal processes for working with construction managers. And also trying to keep prices down. Um, I liked the way that they were doing their co- uh their cost checking internally. Um, Mark Brody started, uh he was actually with a different architectural firm and actually started our needs assessment. And then he ended up on Williams, which regardless, no offense to you, Mark, we would have, Williams would have been a, a very qualified candidate regardless. But bringing Mark in too, um, you know, he's, he's been with us since the actual beginning of the project or when they actually started the need study. Um, but flexibility, I think, was the number one thing that I liked. They had the ability to listen and they, they stressed that. Throughout the interview process that they're not one of those groups that will tell you, this is how we do it. And that's the only way to do it. They'll listen to our responses and then show us other ways to do it. Because honestly, John, Paul, Brian, they're the ones who know the daily operations of the public works and what actually occurs in that building. And um, and I will say this, one, and my last comment about it. Um, in our interviews, the companies that we're looking at, it did in fact say that with construction costs and whatnot, the things that are going on in the current marketplace. It is something that we will probably have to look at that needs assessment and then take it and possibly use it to redesign. Uh, what may actually be a new building instead of an expansion because it may actually be more cost effective. It may actually be cheaper to build a brand new building. So at that point, we'll have to, once we get a contract, bring it to the village board for approval. Our first step would be to go back to a needs assessment and see what makes sense financially and what makes sense uh logistically to make it work. That's it.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Hey, item four. Item three.
Hi, item three is, uh, John is going to walk us through an EPA requirement for green infrastructure policy.
Thank you, Steve. Um, the I E P A requires us to participate in the NPDS. Program that requires us to comply with all the regulations, the I E P A as far as water pollution goes. From time to time, the permit that they, that we operate under, the regulations change. And under our last audit by the I E P A, they had recommended that we implement some green infrastructure strategies. So what's green infrastructure, green infrastructure strategies are intended to do is to improve the water, water quality. By strategically implementing these principles into our um infrastructure projects. So. Example of these could be something like at, adding rain gardens and boulevards where it can absorb rainwater before it actually gets into our storm sewer system. So some of the benefits that the um I E P A has identified is. That when we encourage the rainwater to go into the ground or captured by trees, it's less water that's getting, say, hitting the street. Picking up pollutants and running into the Fox River. So it's an overall initiative to try to clean up the environment and provide um. Provide a, a cleaner and healthy environment for everybody. A lot of these things, we are, I wouldn't say a lot of these things, but we are doing some things already. For instance, um, we plant new parkway trees every year wherever there's a dead or dying tree or there's space in the parkway. We plant trees and the, the canopies of those trees then help infiltrate and gather that water. And drop, put it into the root system of, of the tree where it can eventually then, you know, recharge the aquifers. And, and reduce the overall volume of water going into the storm sewer. So this policy is basically um a requirement of the. Uh, I E P A, but it's going to be the way that the village goes about addressing this strategy is going to be through our infrastructure projects. So we'll look at our infrastructure projects wherever there's room to implement some green infrastructure pro. Policy or strategies where it's practicable and not over expensive and not, um, you know, detriments to the intent of the project overall. We're going to recommend doing those things. So that's basically a summary of this policy.
Very good.
Thank you. Item four.
Thank you. So the next step will just be the adopted by resolution at a village board meeting. Uh, the last item on the agenda tonight is, uh, it's kind of a twofer. So it's a, Brandon, our uh village engineer is going to walk us through the most recent pavement condition index study that we just finished. So that was something when John came on about four years ago uh to grade our roads. Uh, we've always historically gone through them uh based on uh their, their uh age and then going out there and inspecting them manually. What we started doing in addition to that was we actually hire a firm now uh every three to five years and we're going to probably most uh do it every three years. And then that's where we're at now. To have them actually video the roads, look at it, give us an assessment score. It helps us really determine and be flexible on where road programs are each year. So. When residents ask, why isn't my road doing it? Why is, we can actually show them the data that shows how we picked their roads and why the roads were picked. Tonight, he's going to show us that study that was just completed and that's going to curtail into um our next year's road program and, and go from there. So Brandon, take it away. Oh, one thing I do want to point out. Brandon being with us for about a year, this is the first time that the village, to my knowledge, will ever have the entire road program designed and housed by our own staff. So Brandon will actually design the road program next year. So all of the pavement and everything will be his specs. No pressure.
Thanks, Steve. Uh, so first I'll start off with a little background on the pavement assessment study. Go to the next slide, please. So we previously did one, as Steve mentioned, in twenty seventeen was the last one that we did. So this is an update to that study. And uh, the index that we're using is the pavement condition index. And uh, how they do that is they do drive a vehicle around town with a multiple videos mounted on it. And it's collecting videos that then are analyzed by staff in their office and on multiple staff review it in order to. Uh, kind of equalize any, I guess, biases or differences of opinions on it. And uh, enable to analyze it based on the different pavement distresses that they're seeing on those videos that include cracks, ruts, potholes, et cetera. And uh, the amount and severity go into that number that gets assigned. Uh, next slide. Uh, so here's the, a summary of the breakdown from this study that just happened in twenty, the summer. And uh, twenty twenty-one, as you can see, twenty-seven percent were good, sixteen percent satisfactory. Twenty-four percent fair, twenty-two percent poor, nine percent very poor. And then a two percent serious condition and then zero percent were actually failed. So. Onto the next slide that we can compare to uh twenty seventeen was, like I said, the last time that we did it. And uh, overall, at the bottom there, you can see from twenty seventeen to twenty-one that our scores increased by six points. With uh one hundreds being like a perfect brand new road. So it has gone up. So. This is saying that overall our condition throughout town has improved since then. Uh, digging into the data, comparing it to the last time, it appears that this time there's. They didn't rate it quite as hard, maybe as last time, just kind of comparing some roads that hadn't been. Had any work done since that study. Uh, so there may be a couple of points from just kind of differences over the years of evaluators. Doing it. Also, the village has been increasing the amount of funds used uh for the annual road program recently. So that is a, a major factor as well. And uh, the timing of the study this year did include uh all the roads that were done in. Twenty twenty-one as well, which influenced uh the score having been higher. And just what do these uh ranges and scores mean? So uh, when it's good, no real maintenance action is needed because it has been recently resurfaced and redone within the past. Probably four to five years generally. Uh, as it goes down to satisfactory and fair, you start getting into when. You would start doing the first preventative maintenance activities, which uh for the village is generally a crack ceiling is what we do. And uh, you may even get into some uh select patching and some uh isolated spots that are deteriorating on different streets. And as you get into the poor and very poor, you're getting more into where you're milling off the layers of asphalt and putting brand new asphalt back. With a, as they get lower on the scale, the deeper you're going, where you're getting into the, doing stone repairs. And the more stone repairs as it gets lower, the higher percentage of the street needing it. And obviously, as it gets lower, it comes more expensive to make those repairs for the roads. So the next slide here is showing, uh, it's a little hard to see on the, the scale here, but. Uh, just what the road network scores look like, color-coded with uh the purples and darker reds being the worst streets. And the green and blue being the best. As you can see on the, the east half of town, generally the northeast corner, the village. Uh, has a lot more of the, the reds and orange and then uh the southeast corner. Uh Chesterfield neighborhood also has a lot of those darker colors. And then I seem to see where we've recently been by the blues and greens. With our road resurfacing program. Now on the uh, the west side. You can see again, kind of the conditions throughout. We do uh orchard gateways. Uh, it's starting to deteriorate, which we do have a grant funds that'll be covering that in a few years. We'll be using that money to improve that street. And then uh primarily west of uh Deer Path is a lot of the other kind of yellows, oranges, starting to get to that, to that red. So we use all this information to help us in determining a, a strategy for using the funds for road maintenance. Uh, so we use this along with road history to come to that conclusion of what streets to do on a yearly basis. And uh, while going through this process, we're also looking at other factors such as. Uh, the age of the water main, history of any leaks and uh the televising that we've done recently of sanitary sewers to. Coordinate any other repairs that would need to take place before resurfacing a road so that you're not back there a few years later. Uh, having to patch it due to, to more repairs and uh replacements. Uh, so we do look at this and budget and look at a five-year plan, ten-year plan, just kind of seeing where we're going to be based on different. Uh, spending amounts to kind of get an idea where we'll be. And uh, on a yearly basis, we do try to make some projections of how the scores of different neighborhoods are decreasing. And uh, with that, then becoming more accurate by doing the actual assessment again and. Uh, about every three to five years is what's recommended. So I'll turn it over to Bill to talk about the, the finance.
Thanks, Brandon. Um, we just thought at this point it'd be good to just touch on the funding that the village has available. Um, for the upcoming year for the road program and in general, kind of talk about some things that. We're finalizing our um comprehensive annual financial report right now. And so some of this we would talk about in a month or so, but. Uh, wanted to just uh hit the highlights, highlights a little bit before they introduce the options for the uh twenty twenty-two road program. So we have base revenues dedicated right now in our capital projects fund for roads and other capital projects of one point six million annually. And that consists of a half percent non-home real sales tax and our three percent utility tax. Um, so that's kind of, we can kind of consider our base revenues. And as you can see, um. We've been able to transfer additional funds from the general fund to the capital projects fund over the last three years. Uh, due to one-time revenue events and um other variances that we experienced and realized over the year. As you can see, that went from three hundred and eighty thousand additional dollars in nineteen, seven hundred and fifty thousand additional dollars in twenty. And just as last year, we were able to transfer through uh two board-approved uh budget amendments, three point two million additional dollars. To the capital projects fund. That increased our fund balance and reserve in that fund from three point seven million to about seven point four million as of May thirty-first. Uh, twenty twenty-one. Um, another factor that we discussed was that the current road program that was just completed in this calendar year. Was budgeted to be about one point nine million. And we were planning on using about seven hundred thousand dollars in capital projects funds and one point two million M F T funds. Uh, to fund that pro- program this year. Um, as you're aware, we received additional mu- uh funds from the state through the transportation renewal fund and the rebuild Illinois. Um, bond program. So we had uh the opportunity this year to uh be a little more aggressive in our road program by utilizing M F T funding. Uh, because the project came in under budget and uh other M F T projects were less than anticipated this year. We were able to fund the entire uh twenty twenty-one road program out of the M F T fund. Um, which wound up being about one point four four million. So essentially, we didn't use seven hundred thousand. Um, that we were planning to use in a couple of projects fund for this current year. Uh, so those kind of summaries, some of the factors that went into discussing, you know, what we could or could, um, what we could potentially do next year. And uh, what would be um within the range of comfort level. And I just noted at the bottom here with our upcoming public works facility project, we have um. Taken into consideration, setting aside mon- setting aside funds for uh funding a considerable portion of that. You know, with funds on hand in the future as well. So. Pass it back to Brandon.
Thanks, Phil. Yeah, so uh, our option that we're presenting tonight is a. Accelerating kind of what we had been planning from previous years to a two-year program to finish off. Kind of the far east portion of the village, uh with, in the first year, looking at spending an estimated three million dollars to finish off. Uh, the north of Butterfield and the northeast part of the village. And then following it up with the following year in twenty-three. And then following it up with the following year in '23 with doing Chesterfield Neighborhood all in one year. And the scoring in, for the PCI, these were some of the worst areas on this part of the village and in the whole village itself. And even though Chesterfield had lower scores, there is a chance that the village can apply for some CDBG funds through the county in the coming year due to the census block that it's in, that it would be eligible based on the information that we're seeing. So waiting a year on that would allow us to possibly get some grant funds to help fund that year as well. So on to the next slide. So if we were to not front-load the program with the 3 million in the first year and make it a more even over two years, this was a kind of layout that would get us there to evening, evening it out. Though the first option was, would be preferred in order to reduce inconvenience to residents in the area of having construction two years in a row in the same neighborhood, and it would actually kind of be the third year in a row is.
I like that idea.
Yeah.
I like option one.
Yeah, so, and here's a list of those streets and the preferred option one with the conditions and their scores. As a sum of the whole area was 42, which is categorized as poor. They need maintenance from their significant rutting along curb lines, cracking throughout. Some of the streets also are rough ride due to cracks that are settling across the road. And it's estimated again at about $3 million, and that would be for doing about 5.1 miles roadway.
And specifically, that's Pine Creek, and it's, you see it, it's rated at a 49. But it's one of those roads where the surface is starting to go poor. But as Brandon said, the ride is rough on Pine Creek because, and it's where I think the service lines go under the road and it heaves there a little bit, but it's, so when you drive on it, you feel constant bumps on it. So that's included in the program as well.
That's all I had, so if there's any questions or comments.
I like the idea of option one, just for the fact that you're going to stay in one area and complete it before you move to the other area. Think people will like it better instead of coming back twice. It's my two cents. Plus, you're, you're front-loading and you're getting more done in that, that year, you know?
Yeah, I agree. I live in, I live on Doral. And when you come in off of Oak Crest and into Wingfoot and onto Doral, I ride my bike there almost every day. And it, it's really getting bad to the point where there are like big asphalt gravel rocks that are coming loose. So I'd like to see that get fixed because it's, obviously, it's going to be a public safety issue if it gets any worse.
The board should be proud of the fact that, you know, for years, the village board and, and Bill and the staff, we've always aggressively funded our capital projects. And so, I mean, it's a testament that the money that Bill was showing on the screen, instead of using it for other things, we, we tend to put it where we need it. And the fact is, we do typically put pretty big road programs together, and they work out really well. And this year, Brandon's got a lot of pressure because he's going to design it. So Laura, if there's any issues, you know who to call now.
How does our plaque get done? Then how did your plaque get done so quick?
I don't know. I, I am so much in favor of Pine Creek, Columbia Circle, those are all really bad streets.
Completing that project sooner rather than later.
I actually think four years ago during the PCI study, Trustee Lowery said, "There is no way that Pine Creek is that highly scored on that road." He's like, "It's bumpy."
It sure is.
Of course, I live on Pine Creek, so I'm all in favor of Pine Creek being reserved.
You, you made a believer in the video program. I didn't believe it at first.
Hey, John, I got a question. John, so like last year, you said the budget was what, 1.9 million? And it came in at 1.4. Is there, is there a way then to add, like, last minute or something, additional streets when you're that short on what was budgeted? Like, can you throw, can you get more streets added once the actual cost comes in?
It's possible, but we try, we're trying to tighten up those estimates as best we can because the challenging part of it is then Brandon's already got approval from the board, say, to design all those streets in that program and bid it and let it. He'd have to go back and collect the data then and kind of re-engineer it to throw it into specs.
Gotcha.
That's only challenge. So what we're trying to do is just try to get it as close and as accurate as we can with this estimate. So we're getting the best use of all that money.
Okay, cool.
I also, I mean, I just want to make one comment that I've worked in four communities throughout northeastern Illinois. And by far, North Aurora has been probably the best community working, to work for as far as financial resources available. Bill's done a great job, you know, managing the money that we have. And, and with, you know, the way we're implementing it to maintain our streets is incredible. I just looked at the stat that Brandon put up there, it was 5.1 miles for $3 million. 5.1 miles out of our 77 road miles is roughly like 6%, which means we're getting to every street once every 15 years that's unheard of. And some of the other communities I was in, it's like 85 years that they're coming, literally, so.
And roads typically last, John, what, about 20 to 25 years?
I'll pass that question on to our new engineer.
That's usually the 20-year cycle is, is where we start to really look at roads.
So option one is what you're looking for then? Is that what you're looking for?
Yeah, I think we wanted the board to weigh in. I, I'm that, I'm that guy who put the second slide in just to make sure if 3 million sounded too non-pallatable, that you at least had a second option to look at it, but that's what the staff was pushing for.
All right, thank you. Well done, Brandon, nice job. And Bill also, you know, Bill always has us in line and money's available, so thank you, Bill, nice.
Oh, and real quick, to Trustee Ed, Judge's comment. When there's extra money, it ends up going essentially back in that pool. And, and that does lead to years like this where we say we have extra funds. So the plan has always been to try to do neighborhood by neighborhood, so you're not like, "I'll be back here in two years, three years." And what we do is some of those smaller neighborhoods that aren't in big sections, we will sometimes, I call them one-offs. So if we design a program for, let's say, 1.6 million, but we have a smaller subdivision that isn't really near any other subdivision that has to be paved, we'll say, "Okay, well, that one's $300,000, that one's 400, throw that one in this year, and we'll throw it into this program."
Oak Hill is a small neighborhood.
I think Oak Hill was one of those that we were talking about.
Anything else? Steve?
Good. No, that's it, thank you.
No, exact section, motion adjourned.
Motion adjourned.
Second.
Don't pay per say aye.
Aye.
Very good. Thank you.